I got four forty-four imprinted in the agenda because I couldn't go back to sleep and I'd forgotten it.
I'll call ready to order at five thirty. Mr. Cimire called at five eleven. He had a work emergency. He will be here late, but he said he will be here. Do we have the lights on? On the public forum, we have Ron, Wyatt, and Aiden here.
Um, we're kind of waiting for Chuck. We were talking to Chuck last week about, um, fall sports. Our conversation started about winter and, and from what I understand, uh, winter sports at the minute discussed it. But we, but talking with Chuck, um, Aiden became a Falcon last year. And I want to thank you guys because you guys, um, made us really, really feel at home. We were, went to school in Wyer previously until last year, and then his brother came here. And they were, they super impressed, so was I. It was like family, you know, it's, it's, it was a really good experience for both my boys. And the year ended kind of funny because of the pandemic. Um, graduation was weird, um, sports was weird, the way everything just kind of ended. And I can tell you that, uh, having two very active sons, the past, seems like past six months almost, but it hasn't been quite that long. They've been cooped up and, um, there's really nothing for them around here. There was no gyms open. These are basketball rats, runners, so all, pretty much all I could do was run. So Aiden's been, um, running pretty much all summer. Um, with running cross country, you can practice social distancing pretty, pretty easy. The faster you are, the better it gets, I guess, as far as that goes. But he was really looking forward to, to participating this year. Um, he's participated in cross country since his eighth grade year and he was looking forward to doing it. And I'll tell you what, it was like ripping his heart out last week when he heard that, uh, fall sports would not be happening. So we talked to Chuck last week and we were talking more along the lines of basketball. We took that blow of cross, cross country and he said, wait a minute, we haven't completely, he hasn't closed the book on fall sports yet. Their South Dakota High School Athletic Association is developing a, a pretty good policy to practice, um, safe, uh, safety with sports and, and we honestly thought about, uh, transferring so he can participate because just twenty miles down the road, they're, they're doing fall sports. He watched, uh, some of his friends play at the Pentagon Sioux Falls basketball somewhere along. And, and couldn't participate because he wasn't on a team from over there. Um, Todd County didn't have a team in it, so I mean, he couldn't participate. So pretty much our kids around here just sat and watched. And speaking of Aiden, the last couple of days, and we talked quite a bit this weekend about, today especially. Um, and just to be honest, and I, and I know we're being, we're being streamed, but to be honest, there's nothing out there for these guys right now. A lot of his friends are turning to, to drinking. There's no youth center around here. There's no, there's really nothing. You can't get in a gym, you can't do anything. So I, I would, um, asking on his behalf and his friends, um, if we can please consider fall sports, if nothing else, cross country. Um, that's what we're here for, but I think it'll need more to, to hear from, from Aiden than it will from me.
Uh, hi, my name is Aiden and I'm being seen this year. And I was really hoping to do it here at Todd County, run cross country. Um, hearing that there's a possibility of fall sports going to kind of crush me because I love running. Running is very peaceful to me and, you know, it's just kind of sad just to hear about that. And, um, I have like a lot of opportunities. I have a lot of schools looking for me, offering me to run for them. And this is a really big opportunity for me and I feel like it's kind of being taken away from me if this happens.
Kind of how does he continue his, his education? Cause as it is, I mean, we're, we're, luckily we have internet and computers. Um, I have a, I have an education with computers and I, I think homeschooling won't be a problem for us. But I see, like, we're one of the poorest counties around in the nation. How that's going to happen for everybody? I see a lot of people falling through the cracks and we talked about that too, like, he's going to see probably a lot of his friends get lost and then, and, and a lot of, I mean, a lot, I hate to say it, but a lot of bad things can happen. And that's not anybody's fault, that's the, that's the world we're in right now. Um, but I think that's what Aiden's kind of getting at here. Um, he had his hopes up last year. He's had coaches, um, calling him and his brothers since sophomore, junior year. And now we're kind of limbo with what Tyson's going to do because we're, as far as going to college. And then Aiden's still got a whole nother year, but with, without athletics, I mean, that's a, that's a, a way out for a lot of our kids to get off the reservation and continue their education and then hopefully come back and help. But like he said, he felt like that was just one opportunity that he had. That without him, him being able to even have a say, it was ripped from him. And, and thankfully you guys are allowing him to have this say today. That's all it is, it's a small, he said he's, he's a little nervous and shy. One of his, uh, big concerns is, is like I stated earlier, just, he's got a big heart and he's worried. He worries probably more about his friends than himself. Um, and he's, he's kind of worried, I mean, there's, there's, there's nothing for these guys. And I guess all we're asking is please, uh, take it in consideration, um, South Dakota High School Athletics Association, uh, safety program for all activities and, and, and please give these guys a, a chance to express themselves through, through sports. And that's, that's really all I have, unless you want to add something. You could probably put it in email way better than he can express himself, but just thank you guys for, for hearing us today.
Thank, thank you guys for coming and, uh, I'll go first then. I, I appreciate it, you know, coming and, you know, expressing your opinions and stuff. We, we, I mean, it was tough. I mean, me, I'm, I love sports, you know, all sports. And, you know, I, I've been to a lot of local games and other games all over, you know, football, basketball, you know, baseball, golf, everything, you know, and that's, but, you know, looking at the big picture. Again, I said this at the meeting when we made the decision in regards to school, that, um, we look at all students, all students and, and I'm not, I'm, and that, that's who we're here for. And I, I love sports, but I, I love my students more. And you, you know, um, for me, this is a scary time. The coronavirus is, I mean, it's my understanding that, you know, it's an airborne and it's also contact virus. And that really scares me. It scares me a lot because, you know, I mean, there, there's no guarantee in anything, you know, and, you know, there's, you know, contact sports or, you know, cross country. And, you know, of course you guys exert yourself and, you know, you sweat and, and, and take all the precautions there are. I, I understand that, but, but at the same time, we're a school district and we did make the decision for, for school before we made the sports one. And we did say, you know, we made that decision for the first quarter. We're going to revisit it after that. And, and who knows, but, you know, that's where I'm coming from. And, and everybody else had their opinion as well, so I will let them express their opinions too.
My thought on that is if we go grocery shopping at Buies right now, we're going to go into way more chance of contacting with it than he is running on the course. Um, I understand that and I also understand that it's also, sports is voluntary, it's not mandatory. They're not going to go to an event and come back and bring it to school because there is, there isn't school. He's going to bring it home. And, and we're willing to sign waivers as I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure a lot of, um, parents and students will. Aiden's going to be eighteen in November. Um, so this is a choice that I'm allowing him to decide and it's his choice, not mine. And, and I guess we're just asking for the opportunity. But as far as, uh, coming in to, him to contact, um, we're just ready to move on because like I said, if we can go to Buies, we can go to Walmart, um, our chances of catching it are, are better than at any sport activity we go to. And that's just being honest and that's moving to it. It's almost like you can't shop, but it's necessary. And I think sports is necessary for these guys' hearts too, as a, to heal. I mean, it's been a weird time for everybody.
I wanted to thank you both for coming today and, um, I was trying, um, my best to, to plead the case for both sides of the aisle. And, you know, my son was coming to practice and he's, he's also really bummed. And I don't know if he watched the meeting and knows that I'm the one that made that motion. He'd probably be a little more upset than just bummed if he did, but, um, the reason, I want to explain the reason I did is that it is our job to educate students. I mean, that's what the school is supposed to do, correct? And, um, if the concern that was brought was contact and exposure and education is necessary and, uh, it's a law, you know, you have to be in school. And we, we weren't even going to offer in-person money. In my mind, it didn't make sense to, to do sports as an extracurricular because they are extra, any extracurriculars, not just sports, anything. And that's why I made that motion, um, and I feel for you, I really do. I wish, you know, I wish there could be sports. I wish that for my son, he, he's really bummed and he was coming to practice. And I brought him to practice because if there was in-person school, I had every intention of sending him because that was my justification. So, um, I, I hear you guys really do, but like I said, um, you know, one decision was made and, and for me, that just kind of coincided. So, um, I just wanted you to understand why I made the motion. And I totally, I totally understand, um, where your heart is too, I guess.
You're right in that you could probably catch the virus walking into a Walmart or into Buies. Or we could catch it anywhere. We, you know what I mean? We know, but nobody knows how many hours we have to live on this earth. You know what I mean? We all have, we just don't know. Um, I have a son that was running, I have two boys that were going to run, can run cross country as well. And I have mixed feelings about it. I want their safety, but they were wanting their independence, just like your son. They wanted to both run. But when we were looking at the safety of our bus drivers and some of our staff and then people who have grandparents in the home, and they were trying their hardest to make sure that things weren't brought home to them. My heart feels for them. I want to make sure, I wanted my children to run cross country really bad, but at the same time, if we're trying to protect our children and our students and our, and our people, then we have to do the things. Sometimes it's a hard choice. Um, you have people on both ends of the spectrum, those that are, can't go anywhere because they're trying to protect a loved one and those that, you know, we have healthy people in our family, we want this for our kids. We were trying to make a decision that wouldn't meet everybody's needs and it, it is what it is. We had a vote last week and it turned out how it did. And it doesn't really make sense to do the extracurricular when we're not doing the in-school itself. Because to me, as much as I love sports, education is the number one reason that we have a school district in the first place. I'm, I'm passionate about sports. I used to run cross country and track myself. I was pretty good. Um, but at the same time, I, it's just one of those things where we can't always control the votes and sometimes things don't go the way you want them to go. I, um, I don't know anything about independent running. I don't know if Chad's here to answer any questions like that. I don't know if anyone's allowed to do anything independently. Because that may be an option for people, but I just know for our district, we have to support the decisions that have been made. And, and like I say, my heart goes out for you too, because I, I know what it feels like to be passionate about a sport. And, um, but I know also that we have to be unified in caring for our people and to make watch out for our elders and for those that are at high risk. So that's another big point that we have to look into. And we may not be one of those that are going to be prone to being susceptible to different types of diseases and viruses, but other people are very susceptible and so we have to kind of look out for them and we have to be, that has to influence our decision as well. Cause there are several of our bus drivers and they would be the ones that would trans, be transporting our students. I'm very concerned for their health, even though I, like I said, I'd love to have my students go participate, but at the same time, we have to look out for staff and other family members as well. And it's a hard, hard thing, no matter what, there's going to be somebody that's not happy. Um, and we're doing our best to try and meet the needs of everyone. And I, I feel, I feel for you, I do. I don't know if we can look into something independent. Has anybody ever looked into that? I don't know if Chad's, I mean, excuse me, if Chad, if, um, Chuck is going to be here later, I don't know if that's something that you can check into. But you'd have to check with him, I'm not sure anything about that.
Lawrence?
Yes.
With Aiden, right? See the guy, see them giving their budget. It's very important to my, my own top, their dedication, what you do. As a board member, as a committee member, just be patient with us. We don't have control of this virus. We're doing the best we can. We have to create policy that's safe for our students, for everybody. And sometimes when we make decisions like that, we know it affects the community and, so first and foremost, I just want to thank all of you. Aiden, thank you for addressing us and speaking to us and telling us because it's important for you to voice, what you would like from your school and how you, you would like your school to support you. I appreciate that and keep doing that. I hope to do the same as you're doing, Lawrence, my son. He needs to be, he needs to have something to advocate for him too. Looking at everything, all the facts out there behind this virus and seeing, sitting for hours thinking of everything, the possibilities. I voted the way I did because whenever we're struck with things like the coronavirus, even today, the, the information changes too. You know, there, there's positive and there's negative and it just continues to, to change out there. And our minds too, uh, there are definitely things that we do need to do as a community that we have a vast land that can be places where we could start to create things that are more open for, for us to move around. But as far as here at the school, we, our role is to make sure that it's a safe environment for everybody. Just ask you to be patient with us. We, we weigh everything and making sure that you'll get the chance to, to run again or you'll get the chance to play ball. The thing is, we want to, I want to see you play ball, I want to see you, uh, if this coronavirus is something that I don't know much about, I just know what it does. And like any virus, it doesn't go away. Comes back. That's what, that's the scary thing about it. So, yeah. Thank you, thank you for coming, expressing us and, I, thank you.
I want to thank you guys again for coming and, you know, thanks to you, Aiden. I know that it's really hard for students to get up and, and speak in front of adults and, and I'm proud of you for doing that. I'm very proud of you. And like, you know, we all said this was, this is pretty hard. I mean, probably one of the hardest things we've done, you know, and, and, but like Sage said, you know, just have patience with us and, you know, we're here for, for everybody, you know, and it's, it's very tough and we've been, I think, for coming, expressing your opinion.
Thank you guys for having us. Um, we understand why you guys did what you did, but
Can I say something? I don't know what will happen, there are more school districts than just our own who have canceled school and fall sports. And I would just propose that maybe we talk to, um, the South Dakota High School Athletic Association and just see if they would be willing to postpone the season and move it back because there are a lot of students that don't want to miss out on some of their seasons. But it's an option and it's something to think about. Cause sometimes we just have to look outside the box, but we want to take care of our students and our staff and everyone involved, so. But it's just something to think about. Like I said, there's a lot of different ways we can go about and look at things so that people can still do the things that they really like to do. And if we've got petitions together or something, I mean, that's something that I would be willing to look into for my children. Keep them safe and then maybe still see if we could do a season later in the season for them. If other parents are interested, an idea.
I, I liked your suggestion earlier about independent and I guess it doesn't really cross my mind. That's something I'm definitely going to explore. Um, I have to be a coach and bus driver well for him and his friend, uh, I don't know why I didn't think of that, but that's something I'm definitely going to explore. And I'll get with Chuck on that. Thank you guys.
Thank you for coming.
Do you have any additions? Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Oh.
Number Shelley.
All second.
Second, Dan Michelle. All in favor?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Four, three, one. Uh, superintendent.
So, um, last week I mentioned that the state had come up with several additional documents for us. So I added them to your communication page. And they're like the definitions of COVID, um, the staff checklist form. We're doing that. We had our first day of new staff in service today, um, fall task force guidance and recommendations. Um, and then a little bit earlier than that, they had letters, if we had students in school, for the contact tracing. So that there's form letters that go out around the state. So if you had someone in the community or in the school, you had a letter drafted that you could, would guide you on how to let families know. So, uh, those are in place. And then the last one is, um, school contact tracing. So, you know, the schools would actually help with the contact tracing, um, if individuals would, um, contract the, the virus and do the work. So that's something that we still, um, need to do with staff being present. And, um, I'm working with DM on different things. There's, um, Department of Education, Department of Health meetings quite frequently. So, um, between the two of us, we're trying to make sure we stay on top of those recommendations. New staff started today. We had twenty-five individuals there. Um, very exciting, um, group, willing to take risks and tell us about themselves and, and was really happy about the first day and, and how everything rolled out. So, uh, tomorrow they do a little bit more PD and professional development along with, um, Wednesday and, um, Thursday, um, working on, um, more of the same, some trauma and brain information online. The special, new specialized pro, process that we've been starting last year, the MTSS and, um, rolling that out a little bit in more detail. And using Teams and Microsoft tools for, um, Schoology that we were using for a platform. And then Friday's a shorter day for them, uh, send them back and get into their classrooms and get excited about, um, starting the year with their teaching. So, a full week for them.
I did go for a little while this morning and, um, they were pretty eager. I mean, you could tell they're, they were, you know, fearful, you know, and they, and, um, and um but they but they were very um eager, I guess, you know, with that. And the way they were they were shooting, but I think what was for me, what I felt really good about was, you know, the admin team, I I mean, the leaders, every principal went around and shared with them. You know, why are they here in Taekwane and that, you know, we're a big family and, you know, and it's just an, and I could see, you know, them eased, easing up slowly and it was but I mean, you guys did good. It was welcome. It was really good, so. It was.
The family message was strong and clear. Get part of the new family now.
Mr. Hammer did a good job of being the MC and he was full of jokes about everybody as he introduced everybody, so. The admin team, I encourage you to, for that time, pop in and and meet them, so.
There's breakfast every morning from eight to like eight fifty. I mean, great time to just mingle and um see who our new people are and how excited they are. Uh because then they go to different buildings for the professional development, so they aren't they aren't together a lot tomorrow. Um they'll do breakfast and lunch.
That's at the high school?
Wednesday, Thursday, middle school. And then um Friday they get a bag lunch that they can take with them at like eleven? Ten thirty. So it's a grab involved, so they get their lunch and then they can go to their attendance centers and work, so.
And the gift bag they had, those are really nice. And um one of them, you can run a stock.
We're giving a prize away every end of the day, a little bit bigger one. And then um fellows helped to put together a welcome bags. And then I have one for on Friday, more from the admin side, so. Just want to make sure they feel welcome and feel comfortable asking questions. That was another thing, you know, if you're not sure, ask questions. We can't ask too many.
Consider agenda. I have a motion.
I'm going to
Ms. Shelley? Second one.
Paul, Paul.
Michelle? All in favor?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Four zero. Personal items, nothing. Meetings and events. Events. Meetings are all listed. Um we do have an executive session that that I would have liked to have had, but um all these board members need to be present and Mr. Knoyer is not not present, so we will have to do that in the next minute. Does anyone else have anything to add about the meeting or Chad, do you have anything to add for us or or Mike and us?
I, well, uh working in conjunction with the tribe, uh we have a meeting tomorrow. CDC, Scott Herman's coming. Uh we are discussing uh possibilities of Rosebud School. Um but the CDC is willing to work with us and the and the tribe is willing to work with us to look at our facilities and how we can come back safely. Um so there'll be some tours and uh it's a first initial meeting tomorrow. So that'll that'll be going on tomorrow morning.
Nice. Board members, would you like to share? For the last minute, do this meeting?
Don't have anything.
Sage, do you got anything?
No, I'm just just one question on the the exceptional ed service. Is that
What?
The exceptional ed service that's posted online?
Mm-hmm.
Just clarifying. How many students either are called it up?
Well, they they have options and it would be a very small group. Um and it has a letter that went out um giving parents uh some options about uh individual service or small groups, probably like two, uh if they have some of the same um identified needs. So um parents will be able to choose the format they want students or they can go virtual. We've got some options for um online as well, so. There's a, just so you have a little background knowledge, there's a lawsuit pending with Brookings School District because they did not offer face-to-face E S Y. So it's something we need to be very um careful with. I E Ps are a federal law and um we have to make sure we're offering those services to those families.
I knew the federal law and federal guidance on that before. I knew there was federal law and guidance, I was just wondering how one of our centers was going to open up to us today and so I just need clarification on that. Thank you.
In regards to that, I mean, exced law, to me, it was always like we have our law and then there's, it's not separate, but it's, I mean, it's law law. I mean, we have to follow, you know, exced law and and go by that, but um so as far as that, you know, whatever parents decide, would it be to the resource center here or to the school where they're at?
Um their case managers will reach out to them and see what they need and then we would go from there. Because like the preschool population would be at the preschool. Um speech services could be, you know, there's several options there. You know, they could go attendance center-wise or um um resource center, depending on locations of families and then the transportation portion. You know, um if families want to bring their kids in, you know, that is an option or and, you know, providing that as well. And then just seeing the numbers and the need for transportation will be another thing we'll have to work through, but the best way for me to under or help everyone understand that is special ed law is, I mean, it's above all of us. You know, um it's above a school board, it's above, you know, so that's why that format looks a little different. We have to offer that and um that's been challenged in courts and proven, so.
This was brought to my mind, so I wasn't going to say anything about this, but I think I'm going to bring it up. Um so we have our educators that we're expecting them to be in their buildings and sometimes more than one parent is teaching or involved and so they have students with nobody to look after those little ones. And so they're trying to meet up with other groups of parent, you know what I mean? People are trying to get together and figure out how they're going to teach their kids and how they're going to meet these needs. Is there any way for these teachers to have some time where they can switch off, like I'll go be with the kids and take care of them, you guys teach, and to have a little bit of leave time built in so that they can meet the needs of their students, I mean, their children as well as their students? Because I've run into this, I ran into some people like me, myself personally. I teach at the college and I teach on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And I was trying to figure out what I was going to do on those two days with my children because I couldn't be with them. And so I was reaching out to some of the other teachers to find out what they were doing. And so I'm just letting you know that there is a need and there's going to be people that are going to be coming together because they don't have any other options.
And we've still, we've taken some of those concerns and calls, um administrators right away that have teachers that have children. Uh we talked about in school, but the liability is, you know, an issue that I don't know how we would meet that challenge. Um, you know, it's uh so we have done some brainstorming and we've talked to um Boys and Girls Club is one thing we were thinking of, but um we're going to have to be creative and um again, in our our groups, our brainstorming, try to help come up. Um I know admin and staff are talking about how they can reach out to kids, so you know, that would be one thing if we have several families in one location, maybe, you know, um some staff could provide some help there. But it it is one more challenge for families, so.
As far as what I understood, partly what you were saying, Michelle, is for teachers to go outside of the school and go somewhere?
Well, there, if you have parents that have to be teaching and they're expected to be in the buildings and teaching, and they have children that are at home, they've got to have somewhere or someone to look out for those little ones. Um there's always been a daycare shortage here. And so I know that there are some staff that have kind of reached out to each other and said, you know, can you kind of help here with the kids this day and maybe I could help this day to make sure that all of our students needs are met? Because sometimes there's nobody at home that can look out for those little ones. And we've chosen to keep them home and we want the parent, the teachers and the educators in school. That somebody's got to be with the little ones. And there's just a need that I'm just saying, I'm putting this out there that we, there are some needs that we haven't considered. People are going to have to be gathering because they're going to have to reach out to these kids that don't have parents home with them during the daytime. So I'm just saying, we kind of shut things down and we've been trying to protect, but at the same time, there's going to be people that have to pull together. And so if that is the case, and if they are staying in small groups, that's probably a good thing. They're not going to be interacting with everybody. But they still, those educators are going to need some hours to, to have some time to say, well, I'll take care of the kids this day. You know what I mean? Have a leave day or something where they could work together and help just the children that are involved with the educators all being in school and the children not. So there is a need there that affects quite a few families, I believe. I mean, not as many, I mean, I mean, I don't know how many, but there is a need. And there is going to be people reaching out to meet that need, so.
I mean, with thirteen attendance centers, I mean, should we have to be considered for everybody? I mean, not just, you know, like a handful here and a handful there would have to be inclusive of the district if that was to be considered, but.
I think they need to, you know, um really think about the resources that are available through the community and reach out. You know, the tribe's been very open door about working with us and trying to figure things out. You know, that's why the Boys and Girls Club kind of came to mind, um places where kids naturally gather. Um it could maybe be in, you know, a couple of families and then um maybe staff could go and provide some instruction there instead of, you know, but that's, you know, we've said we don't want kids in school, so that has to be an outside. I I think it's doable if they're creative and think and, you know, just think about the resources that are available because every community is different as well.
I do know Boys and Girls Club have their guidelines too. They're only taking seven students a session, so like seven in the morning and seven, so I mean, but that's, you know, I think that's something for parents to work out with. We're, you know, certainly think we have plenty on our plate. I know it's your
And it has been a conversation. I mean, it was administrators that had um more staff probably with little ones have been talking about that for some time. It's just, you know, resources, I mean, have to be really scrutinized and.
Anything else from the board?
Back to this thing, making sure that these three options for um exceptional ed services are these three, just clarifying question, if parent needs services, the services are going to go out or just in person is only served when they come in, right?
Uh there's different options that the family can choose. I'm going to try and pull the letter up Sage. Um that was um sent out. Just hang in there a second. I'll get back to my emails.
I'm just reading what we have on our website. Our tribe's website has the three options there.
Yes. So what was your question then, Sage?
Will there be services for parents that decide they don't want to?
That they don't want to?
Are that the service comes out to their home? Has there ever been ever a service like that provided? I know I know there has been because, you know, as a parent, I'm a child.
That's something that will have to be worked out between um the family and the case manager. I would recommend because of liability again, because we we were in that situation a few years ago when I was the director. And um it asking staff to go into homes, maybe a public community place would be, you know, an option, but I I do not advise because of liability issues going into homes. But we could find a common, you know, we've used the college before, the community centers, those types of.
So like our O T can be?
Yes, yes. And some, they have gone into like the birth in three program. They have gone into homes in the past, but that's been, you know, a very close relationship between staff and family. You know, so between providers.
I want to keep staff service. I just want to make sure that parents understand clearly what their options are and services looking at. But that's all I have.
Um I want to thank you guys again for your teamwork, you know, and and we still have a lot more work to do. And I appreciate us putting our heads together and respecting one another to, you know, and we do, I know, you know, the students are first, that's who we're here for, students and families and and I just can't thank you enough. Communication. Teamwork. Thank you. There's one now. I will adjourn at six eighteen.